Ready, let's rock.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on October 10, 2023, at the Newton Town Hall. First, I would like to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Ms. Burke is not in attendance tonight. We have Ms. White, Mrs. White, online. So that being said, at least for the first item on the agenda, I would like to appoint Mr. Gibbons. So the first item on the agenda is Bijou Realty. Did I get that right?
I don't know.
Okay. LLC of Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for an amended site plan to enlarge their retail space at 21 South Main Street. The property is referenced as Tax Map 11, Block 5, Lot 20. Jen, do you have anything to add?
It's a fairly simple application. I think it's complete. I think you can take jurisdiction. This almost barely qualifies for needing your review, so if there are some questions, I'll go into it, but I think you're all set to take jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to?
Sure. You want to make a little preamble? So this is a condominium site plan that you guys approved back, forgive me, because it's around 2020, 2019, somewhere in that range. You guys approved a... I'm just trying to get you the exact date. I'm sorry, I can't put my finger on it right now, but just a couple of years ago.
December 21 of 2020.
Thank you. Somewhere in the midst of a pandemic or something. But what we did was, we condominiumized the property that had the store, the gas station, the old feed supply in the back, right? And a large cable company from Dairy, not cable, like cable TV, but they sell cables and manufacture some. They took over most of the property, and it was done as a condominium type of thing, so the store could stay in business and whatnot. So there's condominium association form there. As part of your regulations, you required us to come before you. Sometimes, in many towns, you don't need to come before the planning board to condominiumize land, but you did require, so we came through the process with you, received all the approvals, did declaration of a condominium, bylaws, and the like. And so, of recent, the store, the general store that exists there, coupled with the gas station, was looking to change part of their footprint within the building, within the store, to basically take down, not even take down a wall, they would replace, would like to replace a wall with glass, move a door a little bit, and create a retail area, an additional retail area that was originally to be, originally was declared storage area and an office within that. So it's a little bit of a change of use, right? There's, so inside, there's a little bit more retail, no office, no storage. And that's the gist of it. So as a result, that there's an amended site plan, we're back before you with that. We've read through the bylaws, read through the condominium declaration, and the rules and regulations governing this particular condominium, and it does not violate any of those ordinances within the condominium itself. So from my standpoint, it's relatively simple, but I'll pause and try to answer any questions the board would have, or perhaps members of the public as appropriate. Thank you.
And just for the record, you are with?
Oh, boy, I didn't even say that. I always say that to start. I was thrown off. Sorry. My name's Tim Peloquin. I'm a licensed land surveyor. My company is Promised Land Survey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm representing the owner, Bijou Realty, whatever. And there is a letter to represent them in the file. Thank you.
Did you have something?
Yeah, just because I made the statement that this barely qualifies for your meeting or your review, it does need your review. It's under Section 4.3, that basically a change within a structure dictates the planning board does get a review. It is a change of use, but both uses that either were proposed or existing are permitted uses within the district.
Okay. Thank you. I guess it's on us to make a motion to accept jurisdiction.
We'll make a motion to take jurisdiction.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Unanimous. Do we have any questions from the board?
Yeah, question. So this retail space, is that going to be a different type of retail, or is it going to be actually part of what is already the store, just other products?
Part of what is already the store. It's not a sublease or anything like that. It's all part of what the store does. Just a display area, basically.
Expand the different products that they're going to be able to sell.
Precisely. And further, I didn't say this at the beginning, but given my chance to speak right now, I will tell you. So these plans that you have in front of you, which does show that revised floor plan area?
Yeah.
In a revision, those plans would be re-recorded at the Registry of Deeds to reflect these changes, just so you know, that would be part of, if this board deems these approved.
So I have a question. So what are we looking at here? Is this one building all broken up, or is this?
Yep. So these were the plans, basically, that you approved. And this, if you're looking at Sheet 2, which is basically...
Yeah, so that's the store.
Yep.
As it stands, okay.
These are the Newton 21.
The different levels.
Well, let me tell you which is the store, is unit, actually, we'd have to look at the front.
Yeah, the front.
It says Unit A, so that's the general store, Unit A. So we'd look at the first floor of Unit A, okay? And then, at the top of the page of the first floor of Unit A, which is the only thing changing, you'd see retail area at the very top with a 21'6" and a 27'1". That area on the old plans would have showed an office and a storage area. So we're basically, and it's being replaced with that use. And because there's a slight change to the plan, it was decided that we needed a very slight amended site plan. The only thing that changes on the plan, right there.
So how many units would this be? How many units is this in that building?
In that building, so in that building, Unit A.
Yeah.
What is approved, you've got the retail store, you've got the basement, which is storage area, and then you have a second floor, which is the lower left corner of the plan, which is an allowed use of two apartments above the store. One 970 square feet, the other apartment's 1,232 square feet. One's a one-bedroom. I believe the other is a two-bedroom.
Two, yeah.
One's a studio-type of apartment. And that use is staying exactly like it is. Or is intended to.
So then, Unit C is what? The unit out back, the, oh, no, that's Unit D, so...
Yep. Unit C is the former Newton Grain and Feed Supply.
That's on the left.
That's on the left, behind the gas pumps, if you will. And then way further back is an existing building, D, which is part of, there's no plumbing. That building is strictly a storage building.
Yeah, it's like a loading dock or something.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, this is Barbara. I have a question for the applicant.
Yep.
Okay. On your new plan for the retail area, it says new emergency exit. On the other plan with, that shows all the different buildings, it shows that there is a propane gas tank right in the place where you're going to have that new emergency exit. Is that not going to be in the way?
I'm having a hard time following exactly.
Okay, hang on a second, and I'll tell you just where I'm looking. Okay.
Sheet 1 or Sheet 1 of 2?
She's referring to, there's a concrete pad on the, I'll say, plan left of the building.
Yes.
There's a propane tank, propane gas tank typical in the, it appears to be in the vicinity of the new emergency exit.
Yes, thank you. That's why I'm asking.
It's on the first sheet. I'll show you what she's talking about. So on the second sheet, she's showing that's there. However, if you go back to the first sheet, she's referring to, yes, the propane tank there, and that would be the exit. So she's wondering if that's going to interfere with the exit.
It can't be. They have to come to us first, and then it's a condition that...
Actually, really astute look and comment, but I will tell you, on scale, there's about six feet from that propane tank to the corner of the building, so there would be ample room to put a three-foot doorway. But if this board deemed to make it, these plans approved, subject to your building inspector's approval of an appropriate emergency exit, something along that fashion would be a suggestion, as pointed out astutely by your remote planning board.
Well, I'm looking at it. The propane tank, like you're talking about, seems to be offset off to the side where the emergency exit's actually coming straight out of the back part of the house there.
Yes.
So I would believe that that would have more than ample room.
I would believe it would have to probably be a three-foot exit, based on code.
Yeah.
With a minimum of an eight-inch stud right in that corner. So I believe that there's ample room. But if this board deemed, make that a condition of approval, that there would be sufficient space between the propane tank and the corner of the wall to provide that emergency exit or alternatives to be sought.
I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a really good, good point.
There any other questions or comments on the board?
Is there any designated parking for tenants or residents in the drawings anywhere?
Not additional to what we originally had approved. So there's nothing added, nothing subtracted.
It was brought to my attention that the DOT did bring up the fact about vehicles backing out onto 108, and they would like to see if we could kind of curb that.
Shorten those curb cuts that are pre-existing.
If there was some way to do that. I noticed that the, I don't know if it's one of the tenants or the owner himself, there's that alleyway to the right of the building, as you're looking at it from 108. They tend to park in that alleyway, so it would prevent cars, if they pulled in, to be able to back up just a little bit, and then drive around the building to drive out. Generally, I understand that the onus is really on the people driving the vehicles, too, because I myself tend to back in when I pull in there, because I like to pull out onto 108.
I do the same. I was, I could certainly make mention of this, but to put a little teeth to this, I mean, the board could also make a motion upon any approval that the owner is advised, or, and the owner and its customers are advised not to back out into the state highway.
Do you have a comment?
So I think the enforcement of any of the suggestion of don't, not allowing backing out onto 108, or your suggestion, I think they're almost impossible to enforce.
And that's why I said advised.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand. As an alternative, you could, as a condition of approval, require or request that the owner put up a sign of no backing, you know, please, for safety, don't back out onto 108. That, at least, is a concrete item that you could enforce. There's a sign. But you're not going to be able to stop individual...
Oh, I know.
...owners. So I would suggest not putting it as a condition. The sign is sort of like, that might work, and at least you've warned people, but short of that, I wouldn't recommend taking it up.
I liked his idea about the reducing the curb cut, so you have to back out and then find that outlet to the street that's closer to the gas pumps, but...
To do that, you'd have to have a further amendment to this site plan.
Oh.
Which I suspect they're...
It would involve quite a bit of work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The new DOT permit, potentially.
Possibly, yeah.
I, but I will advise the owner of that fact, so...
Well, there is, they could also put the, like, the precast berms along there, so that you can't back out.
Sure.
Not without DOT's approval. It would be their right of way.
On their property, as it relates to the road, like wherever their property begins, put the precast berms there. No, I don't mean the tall ones, just the ones you use at a parking lot, so that when you back out, you have to pull out straight and go out. I'm just thinking, we're...
My...
Asking for problems.
Impression is that people are just going to drive over them, because they'll only do that once.
Yeah. I think if they just put up a sign, if you could talk to them about putting up a sign, would be fine with us.
And I agree. It's for everybody's benefit and safety, so...
Yeah. Anybody else?
You do have to open up a public hearing?
Do we have any comments from the public in person? None? I noticed we have a couple people online. Going once.
Well, there being none, I'm going to make a recommendation to approve. Recommendation conditions will be to supply recordable bylaws, a note on the recorded pages, that this is an expansion of existing retail space and not of a divided, separate retail space. And that's it.
Can we add our boilerplate language, that the applicant has to get all?
Life safety.
Thank you.
And any state, federal, or local permits?
Local, federal, state permits?
Which would include the building permit, which would...
Take care of that issue.
Take into that issue of the exit.
Yep.
Anything else I missed?
Did you want a condition requiring a sign advising people not to back onto Route 108?
I think he'll take care of it with the owner. I'm not worried about it.
They are good people, and I believe if I tell him it was a concern...
Yeah.
...put up a sign, I believe they will.
Do we have a second out there?
Second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Next on the agenda is, give it a wait for you, Barry. 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp., requesting a public hearing for a 44-unit residential development in private roadway for their land off Puzzle Lane in New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lots 1-1, 2, 27-3, and 20-27-6, and 27-7. Sorry for that. I'm getting everything there. Jen, do you have an update? I know the applicant provided the hydrogeostudy, so we got, we received that.
So I did receive the hydrogeologic report as well. I did not have a chance to fully dive into it. I don't believe your town engineer has either, so it was supplied. It does appear that that triggers the need for the septic design. And there are anything other than that, I didn't have any new information on, so my comments still remain.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones &amp; Beach Engineers. As you heard, since the last meeting, we completed a hydrogeological study and submitted it to the board, the conclusion of which was that there was no adverse impacts or anticipated by the project. We did supply it electronically. If you require hard copies, be happy to provide whatever copies you would need. At the last meeting, there was some discussion regarding the variances for the roadway. The proposed roadway is, that's located on Lot 27-3, which is the big parcel, will require variances where it is located closer than 200 feet from any otherwise zoned property. I say the roadway, but it includes any structures, which are the retaining walls, guardrails, drainage structures. So we have several places where, well, the, this includes those Plastow lots that are part of common ownership for the project. When the project comes within 200 feet of those lots that are owned by the applicant, but within 200 feet of those lots which are zoned residential, we require variance. It also includes the two locations where we enter the residential portion of their property that's in Newton and exits that location. So just to go over this with you, to clarify a little bit. Maybe this will work. We currently have, this is a Plastow lot, and this is a Plastow lot. They're both zoned residential. The 40, the two lots from which the 44 units are located in Newton are also zoned residential. So even though we own all of those lots, when this road comes within 200 feet of them, we're required to obtain variances, and for any of the structures that are involved. So because we do need the variances, and after discussion, we went and talked to the actual, the planner, Plastow, to discuss this, the applicant decided to relocate a portion of what we're calling now the extension road, excuse me, near Plastow, to be 200 feet from land in Plastow that isn't owned by the applicant. And I did bring some handouts just to share with the board. Using my voice tonight.
Please go.
So the first sheet is what we have previously proposed.
Thank you.
Can you send this electronically, too?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to listen to it. So the first sheet is what I just showed you, which is what we currently have submitted. And if you turn to the next sheet...
Barry, can you speak into the microphone, please?
If you turn to the next sheet, you can see, this is the plan and profile of what we're currently proposing, or what you have in front of you, I should say. The pink line is the town line. On the top of that would be, is the Plastow lots, and this is the Newton lot. So currently, you can see the red light, I show on your plans here as well, which is 200 feet from the external boundary. If you turn to the next sheet, what we are proposing to do, you don't have these in front of you yet, but just for discussion's sake, we intend to relocate the proposed extension road, so it's totally located on the town of Newton property, but 200 feet from the lots that are abutting the applicant's Plastow properties, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So if you go to the flash sheet, which is the same plan and profile, you can see in pink at the top is the Plastow town, Newton town line. And so we've relocated to be 200 feet from that external boundary, but we are still within 200 feet of our, we are 200 feet from our Newton, our Plastow properties, which are zoned residential. So based on all the limitations, now we need 12 variances from the zoning board for the roadway locations, the drainage structure locations, and the retaining wall, retaining wall and guardrail that are within 200 feet. So since the last meeting, we worked diligently to redesign that road and to submit the application to ZBA. We were able to attend the ZBA last week, excuse me, at which point the ZBA is requiring that the applicant obtain information, indication from the planning board that those variances are required. So as part of my request tonight, I'm asking that the planning board provide a letter indicating that the applicant needs those variances, and I'd be happy to work with the planner on this, if it pleased the board. Or however you want to do it.
I mean, I'm certainly fine going through to identify, to see if they have applied for every variance that I think that they may potentially need, based on their new proposal. I'm just seeing this new proposal. I mean, I understand what you're going for, but if the board's comfortable with me doing that, that's fine.
And just to, you throw a lot at us. To summarize it, you're pulling the project out of Plastow and keeping it 100% in Newton.
Correct, because Plastow does have a requirement that any development road, building anything, has to come from a road that is located in Plastow. So to avoid the requirement that we go and seek variances there, just for the road portion of it, and to try to meet the intent of that regulation of the 200 feet from a residential unit, we're pulling it back.
Okay. I just wanted to, I, yeah, thank you for the explanation. I tried to simplify it just a little.
Synopsis, yeah.
Yeah, just for anybody that's watching, if you were to go and try to build a building in Plastow, that would likely trigger the need for additional variances from either Newton or Plastow, but that would be a future application.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ms. White, at the beginning of this, made a comment about the fact that nobody on Zoom is able to follow along, so you have a board member who has no idea what's being discussed.
Yep. I, that's why I was trying to summarize it. Just for the people online, previously, the roadway was in Plastow. They are now proposing to move it out of Plastow into Newton. That's generally what's happening, or that was the intent. The alignment of the roads changed, the basins changed. And for various reasons, I think that, there's a few reasons why the applicant would want to do that. It just makes the project simpler for you to get approvals. It's one less community to go to.
And it actually eats up, well, it actually eats up some of the developable area in Newton, but I think it makes the project simpler and more approvable, if that's a word, overall.
I got no problem with it.
So I think at the last hearing that the reason it didn't, we weren't taken for jurisdiction was due to the hydrogeological study.
Yep.
We have addressed that. Hopefully, we can be accepted, and we will have plans for the engineer to review within the week.
Have we got any input about the beginning part of the roadway from New Hampshire DOT?
I'm calling an extension, oh, for for the access to 108.
Yeah.
No, we, DOT works at their own speed. We've been hitting them up and diligently hitting them up. There's only so far you can you can push them, but yeah, we we don't have any update currently. We are working, I mean, we still have alteration of terrain to obtain for Phase 2 as well. We have answered all of their questions. They have indicated that they are, they have accepted all of our answers, I should, I guess, and we are currently working with Fish and Game to resolve issues with potential issues with turtles.
Right.
So once we get Fish and Game to sign off, we've been told that our alteration of terrain permit will be signed.
So I take it we need to take jurisdiction so that we can, what are we taking jurisdiction? In order to, I'm just asking, though, in order to give him the letter, right, that they're going to require for the ZBA?
You do not need to accept jurisdiction to give him a letter for the ZBA.
Because we can't take jurisdiction of this.
I wouldn't, I mean, we've seen it for five minutes, so. The main thing that I, one of the main issues for me not recommending jurisdiction last time was the hydrogeologic report. There are a number of other items, including septic design. There's some things missing with some of the stormwater. It's mainly not technical information. It's inspection and maintenance. There's some items for noting on existing conditions, setbacks, some of the proposed structures, including some of the elevations. There's landscaping detail that's missing. There's lighting detail that is likely missing, snow storage information. So there's a number of small things. I don't, I wouldn't recommend you approve anything without those small details. If you accept jurisdiction, I mean, I think you just got information. You just got the hydrogeologic report. Your town engineer has not had a chance to review it, or at least I haven't seen any updated review from him.
Do you have any comment on us accepting jurisdiction on a set of drawings that we know, I don't know, 500 feet of the road has moved?
I think that you just got the information, and at least one of your members has not had a chance to see it as part of this discussion.
Right, so we would have, I thought we would take jurisdiction on a set of drawings, an application that is not current. That's kind of, but I was, yes. We're saying the same thing differently.
I think it's up to the board, but if you don't feel you have the basic information, which is what accepting jurisdiction is, that they have supplied the basic information you need, whether you agree with it or don't agree with it, if you don't feel that that threshold has been met, don't accept jurisdiction. But if you don't accept jurisdiction, let's give the list of the things that you want to see. Some of them maybe we've talked about, but.
Well, the last meeting, well, you mentioned a couple, and we did make a request for some more details regarding the like emergency egress windows and the and some of the, you know, the stairways and the lighting and the overhang, you know, the doorway protections and stuff.
I think those were more of details that would.
Right.
Pan out, but not necessarily for accepting jurisdiction. Jurisdiction just gives you an overall view that.
No, but our last meeting, we did ask you to provide those. I just thought maybe you would have them.
Two things.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Sure.
This is Barbara. In the past, it has not been the way that the planning board does business to take action on something that they just received that night, that everybody has not had a chance to review. And I'm just talking about the new thing he just handed out.
I would agree, and that's, because I've, I like, I make a mental roadmap in my head. I would have to personally take jurisdiction of the previous set of drawings that have been reviewed by everybody, submitted correctly, versus taking jurisdiction of a project that we're now being asked to, or acknowledge that the project has changed, but we're taking What benefit of the, to the board is it for us to take jurisdiction? Is the question I'm having, am I, personally?
Well, at this point, if you, either the applicant can request a continuance, or if they don't want to do that, you can take jurisdiction, or you can deny it as incomplete. Those are the the basic options. But I, but I will say to help move this along, I'm happy to work with them to help make sure that they've applied for all the variances that they need.
Jim, do you?
I'd be remiss if I didn't remind especially the newer members of the board, you take jurisdiction, the clock starts ticking.
Clock starts, right.
And Ms. Jeffries had her hand up.
I did see her hand up. I just haven't.
I just.
Gotten to her, is her first name Lynn? Is that, did I say that correctly? Somebody, I think it was Al, but I haven't forgotten about her.
Can I just say, if the if the board decides not to take jurisdiction, we would ask for a continuance, and it, if it's causing the board a lot of, you know, heartbreak because of taking the jurisdiction, then I don't want to spend all night discussing that. We can, if there's any other issues that the board has, then let's continue it and move on with the other discussions if the board has anything else.
Okay.
No, I don't have a problem, though, with us giving him the letter so that he can go forward with the ZBA to get those. Then that way there, that's just more that'll already be addressed instead of prolonging that part of it.
I think that's more than reasonable.
Yeah. So how long for the continuance?
If we can, like I said, we're going to have plans into you by the end of the week, so if we go two weeks.
Next meeting?
Which is.
Your next meeting, we do have a lot of work session items to discuss.
Oh, that's right, too. So it would have to be.
November 13th.
November 30th?
13th.
There's not on, there's no meeting on the 7th? That's, yeah, I think your dates are wrong, Jim.
Would be the November 14th.
November 14th.
So I'll make a motion to accept continuance to November 14th, the month.
Second.
Before you finish with that, also with that recommendation is that the board provide that letter.
Okay. The ZBA is requesting three things. That is the planning board review, the circuit rider review, and the town engineers review.
Right. And just so this all lines up, today's the 10th. When's the ZBA meeting? Do we know the next, the next ZBA meeting?
Next ZBA meeting is November 3rd.
That's a Friday?
Uh, no, November 1st.
November, okay.
Perfect.
I just don't want to extend it and then realize the ZBA meeting's like the day after.
Yep.
And Tom, are you all set?
Yeah, I, I just need that letter.
Okay.
I don't want to go there again and spend 30 days and and not have it.
Yep.
Because this is kind of a simple thing to do. In the spirit of law, we're moving it 200 feet to stay with the spirit of law, I know, right? But we still need it because we own the property. So we move it exactly to stay 200 feet. It's not really complicated, so.
Okay, so Bob, you made a motion to continue the hearing until November 14th with the condition that the board, with the suggestion that the planning board provides a list of waivers to the ZBA in a week? Is that enough time?
Yeah, it's still.
Barbara seconded it. Jim was doing a roll.
Okay. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
I'll recuse myself in the vote.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Mr. Gibbons is recused. Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
And Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Got unanimous.
Did you have, I know, did you have any more items to bring up?
Nothing specific. Obviously, if the board had any other questions, and we'll address those, especially the egress and the window and the ADA comments especially, at the next meeting. We did kind of talk about Phase 2, the prior phase, a little bit. Like I said, DOT, we're still working on. AOT, we're really close. The one other thing was the the bonding for Phase 2, and.
I think that's actually next on the agenda.
That's a separate item.
Separate item, unless we could talk about that.
Did you want to see if there's anybody?
I was in a second. That's why I was holding.
Yeah, I'll stop and.
Just that one issue.
Right.
Unless there's anything else. And then there was somebody, and I forget her name online.
Ms. Jeffries.
Ms. Jeffries, did you still want to speak?
Yes.
I see Mr. McDonough, too. But, Ms. Jeffries.
Lynn Jeffries, 12 Ridgewood Road in Plastow. Our concern continues to be, even with the proposed changes that we obviously can't see, the the 200-foot setback is supposed to be between residential and light industrial. So it should not be the, to to land that he doesn't own, it should be to the residential, which is at the Newton Plastow line.
I think it would be helpful, maybe, if you saw the drawings, the updated drawings. Jen and I are looking at each other.
Yeah, so the, what has been proposed, and I understand you can't see it, is that the the roadway would be moved so that it is not in Plastow, and it is also 200 feet into Newton from the Newton Plastow line.
Okay, that's not what you're stood.
Okay. So Barry's contradicting what Jen just said.
Sorry.
It's okay. So what we are.
Sorry, it's at the.
So it's in with, I'll say, I'll just quickly summarize it. It's in with, within the 200 yards, 200-foot yard setback of the Plastow town line.
Yes.
But.
No, no.
No.
It's not in Plastow.
So it's 200 feet from our exterior property line.
Okay.
From his land, not from the Newton line.
Right, that's, I'm clarifying that, yep, that this is the Newton town line, Plastow line. We're loc, we're moving the road, so we're 200 feet from the external property line, but we do require variances to be within 200 feet of that line.
And the variances would only be from Newton, Jen? Can you clarify that? Or do they have to seek variance from the town of Plastow?
Since nothing is being constructed in the town of Plastow, they don't need a variance. The 200-foot setback from residential properties only applies in Newton. Plastow does not have a similar regulation.
So what they're doing is by moving the road, they're negating having to get any variances from Plastow.
For this, what they are proposing, yes.
Yeah, and our intention is to to meet the intent of the ordinance.
Right.
Was to be 200 feet from industri, to keep it to industrial, 200 feet from residential, which we will be.
Right.
Is that good, Lynn?
Well, I I disagree, but that's, I will be at the zoning board's meeting also.
As soon as I get these digitally, I'll put them up on the website.
Okay, I'm not sure if you, if you heard that, Lynn?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. So once we get a copy, it'll be posted on the the town planning board website, or potentially the ZBA, or both. Is there any other comments from the public? Mr. Hamel?
No.
No, nothing? And then we did receive a comment to, no, last week, last Wednesday, from, and a butter that is also in Plastow, I'm summarizing this, similar to Ms. Jeffries' comments that if the road is in Plastow, that the land is zoned LDR, which is light.
Low, low density residential.
Low density, thank you. And it does not currently allow for any roadways, and the size of the parcel would only allow for a single residential home. And they point out the fact that they, in their opinion, would need some relief in the way of variances, and that the low-density.
Residential.
Residential, thank you, does not allow for a roadway to be constructed in support of commercial structures. So they just wanted to reiterate that. Very similar comments that Ms. Jeffrey had, so just wanted to get that out to the public. Any other comments on this agenda item?
And just for the behalf of Ms. Jeffries, so when you construct that road, that 200-foot barrier that you're talking about, you're going to leave the natural barrier up intact so that there'll be no visual sign of the road, and it will also help cut down some and or any of the noise from traffic.
Correct. We don't, we don't anticipate.
Yeah.
Impacting anymore. There's also the 50-foot vegetated buffer that exists in that area, too, so we couldn't impact that even, you know, without additional variances that we're not requesting.
Have that publicly stated.
I think that is, unless you want to stay up there to talk about the bonding. So the next item, it was the request from Mr. Coleman McDonough, emailed us about two weeks ago to discuss 125 Development Corporation's performance guarantees bond with the board, and I believe that this was in regards to Phase 2. But Barry, if you want to discuss.
I can give you a synopsis. One of the requirements of our conditional approval, which we're working on, is to bond the property or the project, and our understanding is that the intent is to, is a revegetation erosion control bond. So because it's a private project, that the only thing that would be impacted if, say, for some reason, he started the project and didn't finish it, the town's not going to go in and finish the project. It's not a residential road where you're selling houses before the road's completed. So if something, God forbid, would happen before, after he started construction, that the bond should cover the the amount to revegetate what has already been impacted and to prevent any erosion. I believe that's the intent. He believes that's the intent, and we would be happy to work with the town engineer to determine what that number should be.
So you're looking to reduce the amount that was previously approved?
If there was a number that was approved for the bond, then that would be yes.
So I believe.
I kind of got this at the last minute, so I apologize.
I believe Jonesa Beach provided the bonding amount.
We provided an estimate for the work, but what we're saying is that, as I said, the private, the site is private, so the road and any, if any of the buildings are going to be, all be private. So the bonds are typically held by towns to, in the case of a residential road that's going in and residential units, a lot of times, those houses begin to be sold before the road is completed. So the bond allows the town, in the event that the developer disappears, to finish the roadway. In this case, nobody'd be hurt because we're not selling the buildings until we have the majority of the work done. Now, if they come in for a building or a certificate of occupancy, say, 85% of the roadway is done. say, 85% of the roadway is done, and they come in for a certificate of occupancy, they don't have an issue at that point going in and bonding the remaining, which would make sense. But the initial bond, it's kind of a, a stretch to require them to bond all of the construction because, like I said, if something were to happen and the developer disappears, the town's not going to go in and build this. You're not going to pull the bond and construct it, because what would be the point? It's a private property.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, it, so from the original conditions of approval, when you guys did the conditional approval on this project, the bond was for a little over $2 million. That was for the construction of the road, the stormwater controls. That's what it was for. It would be, it's not unusual to reduce bonds as things get, get moved along. You build 50% of the road, you reduce the bond by 50%. Very common.
And I would like to add, although there may be no buildings, there may be significant areas that if half of the road is paved, we now need to manage stormwater that may require culverts, basins, not just planting grass, unless the town goes and digs up the road and restores it.
Agreed, but that would be a lot less than 2.2 million dollars.
Could be.
Because that's, that's the cost to build the project. So if you're looking at, in your scenario, if you built half the road, but didn't build all of the stormwater drainage or whatever, I mean, you're, the town's not going to finish the road. You're going to stabilize what was previously disturbed, and make sure that it doesn't cause erosion. That, you're looking at a couple hundred thousand, not 2.2.
I have a question. Isn't part of that bond so that in case something happens and the project isn't finished, that everything, everything that was disturbed can be reclaimed back to the original? I thought that that was, would have been part of that, unless I'm misunderstanding.
I think you somewhat misunderstand that. It was, to Barry's point, more or less, it could be twofold. Two constructive roads, so if there was 10 houses, they didn't have 10 houses with no access. But, and that was in, under the town's purview. But Jen, did you have some?
Yeah, so the intent, and maybe $2 million is the wrong number. I'm not qualified to give you whether it is too much or not. But the intent is to, if, if they go bust and don't finish the project, that the town can come in and stabilize the situation. That might be finishing a portion of the road if it needed to be, because it was left in the state, or the stormwater wasn't fixed, or a culvert had to be put in. That's what it's for. It's not to build the buildings. You're not, the town is not concerned about building the buildings. It's concerned about making sure the site is safe and stable, and not causing destruction on other people's property.
So what the applicant would propose is that we work with the town engineer to come up with the number that more suits that versus the construction of the road and all of the infrastructure.
I'm just going to bring this up now. Are you aware that the approval has lapsed?
We are aware that it's coming up to be lapsed.
I think it's already lapsed.
If that's the case, then we will be back asking for extension? Or reapproval?
So it would have to be a reapproval, because this was approved on March 28th, and it has a six-month conditions of approval being met without an extension. So you're, you're about two weeks past that. And because it's already lapsed, you can't just come in and ask for an extension. It would have to be reapplying.
But that may be a good time to modify the bond, if you're looking to modify the bond.
Absolutely.
From, I forget, I think it was 2.1...
Yeah, 2.124.
Was the original, right?
Yeah.
And now you're looking at this one here, you have down at 1.9?
No, I don't, we haven't provided that information yet. I don't know what the, the ultimate number would be. We normally submit a number, the, the town engineer reviews it, makes appropriate changes, and then we provide it to the board. It's typically the way we handle that.
Or, given your argument, I'm happy to hear other options of like revisiting the bond amount at milestones, which are, you know, pretty common. If you get all the sub-basin, or you build 300 feet. I'm just spitting out enough ideas of potential avenues, so it's not 2.1. Something that KB can review and move on. Or a phased approach for bonding? I'm, I'm not sure what your plans are to construct it, if it's put in the 1,500 feet of road, or whatever. Just something that's somewhat logical. Jim?
Mr. McDonough has his raised, his hand raised.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that.
No problem. Coleman McDonough, owner of the company, applicant. We do, we do a lot of roadways in different towns. We're doing one currently in Plastow right now. And it's a residential subdivision. The bond amount was set by Steve Keach, Keach and Nordstrom, their town engineer. And it was, I believe it was right in around like $1.5 million. And the Town of Plastow asked us to post, I think it was, and these are figures off the top of my head, I think it was around $270,000. They didn't ask us to post the $1,005,000, like in this case, you know, the $2.1 million. And that, that was kind of their restoration number if something happened. And it was at the point in time that occupants wanted to buy houses or buy lots, that they, and it's, that's quite common in every city and town, that at the point in time that I asked for a certificate of occupancy, at that point in time, I would have to bond all the uncompleted portion, be it finished paving, cave carved burn. I mean, obviously, the ponds and drainages, and then, you know, piping would all be done, electricity. But it would be the uncompleted portion, and then Mike would probably give a bond estimate on the uncompleted portion to get occupancies. And obviously, we wouldn't put the finished paving down until all of the construction was done in Phase 2, and maybe even a little bit in Phase 5, because you don't put down the finish before you have your, all your heavy construction done.
So I, I would definitely agree and support reducing bonds as construction progressed. And that number was provided by you, and the town engineer agreed on the amount. So we just moved forward with what was provided in front of us. We didn't actually set the amount. We just moved forward with it. And there was little information of, you know, this is the proposed construction cost, and the, you know, the, the bond amount that you were seeking was X 50% of it, or 25%, or something like that. So if, going forward, if you want to propose that, the difference than the actual construction cost, I think that at least I would be comfortable hearing what your suggestions are, and we could lean on the town engineer and make an opinion or a decision on that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else to add?
And that's the point I was going to bring up. So I'm thinking that you're probably going to come back the 14th with this also, right? Which gives you a whole month to talk to Mr. McNally about this, and we can get this taken care of, too, and it will have it all addressed for you.
Absolutely.
There you go. That way then, we can kill two birds with one stone.
Jim?
Do I have the board's permission to let Mr. McNally know to talk to the applicant?
Do we have to vote on that, or can I just? Do we have to make a motion?
No, consensus works. I'll just...
If you would like to send it to me, I can send it on.
Okay.
Yep. I have no problem with that.
To review it. Jen?
I just want to make sure it is clear for everyone that reapplying for this proposal, now they have all of the things in place, so it should be a much, I would hope, faster potential process. But it is effectively a new application. It opens up everything. It opens up a butter's ability to comment. It opens up questions from the board. You haven't had any regulations changed that I think would impact it. But I just want to make sure that that is very clear. So changing the bonding amount, that's a great time to talk about. If there are other things that are concerned from anybody, great time to bring it up. But I just want to make sure that that portion was clear. It's not just a rubber stamp.
Yep. Do you think you'll have any more approvals by then? I think it would be potentially helpful.
It's very like, I shouldn't say that, but we are hoping that AOT will be finished by then. And then that clicks in wetlands. DOT is their own animal. They don't even have time limits, so we never know when we're going to hear from DOT.
Odeon's wood, if you want to knock on it.
I think if you have revised drawings from AOT, if you could wrap it all in at once.
Yeah, and, yes, and drainage reports, all that good stuff.
Sounds good.
Any other comments from the public?
Could I say one, one thing? Coleman McDonough again? On Jim's note that, you know, being able to talk to Mike McNally, just one comment that, is, is it possible? This has been addressed several times, you know, since we've been building in the town. We, we pay through NEPA for Mike's work. And once he sends off an email to Jim Doggett, or the town, or the planning board, once that hits the town hall, isn't that considered public information? And shouldn't we be CC'd on that? So I think the last meeting, we got it like, I think it was five or seven days after you received it. So it really puts us behind the eight ball to, you know, answer comments and, you know, work kind of diligently to, you know, have productive meetings.
Sure, I can try to resolve that, and as soon as I get it, I'll forward it along to you. Or 125, Jen, do you have anything to add to that?
So I would recommend that planning board members don't directly communicate with the applicants, just because it keeps any votes and any, I'll say, appearance of bias or of separate. I certainly always try to include, in this case, I usually include Barry as the representative on my correspondence when I also email the town. I believe Mike McNally also does the same. But maybe a communication to him requesting he just simply do the same when he emails. Jim, he also emails the applicant or the applicant's representative, just in general, not necessarily just for 125, but...
I will send...
It used to be that way, but it's fallen, it's fallen off, that, you know, I mean, the last comments letter that Mike issued, we got it almost a week later. So it really, you know, it really puts us behind to, you know, answer and, you know, do his corrections and be productive for the following meeting. I would think that Mike, I don't, you know, I don't know the board's opinion. If Mike, you know, I'm paying Mike's bills, right? He CCs the town hall, I mean, CCs the board. It's in town hall, it's public information. I don't see where there's a problem that I, I couldn't get CC'd and my engineer.
I would agree. We can definitely add, I'll, I'll talk to Mike and make sure that Barry's copied in your email address.
Awesome. I appreciate it.
No problem. Is there anything else?
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay, next on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes from September 26th.
Motion to approve said. Second. Bob. Mr. Eddy.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
You shouldn't. I wasn't there, so.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Not nay.
Because you can't, even though if you read them, you weren't here to verify.
However, if you don't believe there was anything fundamentally wrong with the minutes, you may vote.
But he can't, because he wasn't here to actually hear what took place. So even though it looks fundamentally right, it would be inappropriate for him to make comment on it.
That's his choice. Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, next is Invest New Hampshire update in master plan housing chapters and/or public engagement.
So this is just really quick. We're going to talk about it quite a bit at the meeting in two weeks. On a related note, we're going to talk about the groundwater grant. I'm gonna, I've been working on the application for you guys to apply for, which is a free grant to work on your groundwater regulations. And then we're also going to talk about the flooding ordinance, which we sort of covered a little bit the last meeting, but it's some amendments to your zoning that the State Office of Planning and Development has advised you to do, and I also advise you to do. So we're going to talk a lot in two weeks, and you're going to get sick of hearing about me.
Perfect. No, you're going to talk a lot next week. We're going to listen.
No, you're going to talk, too.
Any other comments from the public? Jim, do you have anything? Board members, Barbara? Well, I would like to adjourn at nine past eight.
Ba-da-bing.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.